It's gonna be one of the better discussions we've had in a while in terms of an update on the general plan. Something that the city has been working on for, I guess, the last eighteen months. And I think it's some good information to share with you tonight. Before we go to council interests and issues, I do have John Piper here. And we've had a number of questions related to the progress with debris pickup. So I just wanted John to provide an overview about where we are and some of the changes that we're making over the short term.
I have some maps and a status report of the cleanup here. The debris cleanup continues to move along. We're in our third week of cleanup. We expect to have collected one year's worth of vegetative debris by the end of this week. One year's worth. About forty thousand cubic yards. We expect it'll take another two weeks to get through the first pass of the city. We're getting a lot of calls from people we asked to stay patient.
Say another two weeks?
Yes, sir. For the first pass, then what we're gonna be doing is going through and making a second, if necessary, a third pass. But the stuff continues to come out. There are some areas where there's a lot of debris down and it takes a lot of time to go through it. We have continued to meet the regular garbage and recycling schedules, which are very important because of the potential health hazards if we don't get the garbage up, particularly with the spoiled food. Initially, we focused on cleanup around the schools, the arterial streets, and then the Ocean View and Willoughby area where we have a lot of flood debris. We're working now, we're working through different areas in the city. We've got people working in different areas. Our city forces have worked each weekend and will continue. We've been diverting our streets in stormwater crews entirely to the debris cleanup this week. Contractor has twenty-six different teams out with more coming later this week. We received great support from fleet. All of our, pretty much all of our trucks are up. We had the drop-off centers, didn't get as much use as we have maybe in past storms at a few thousand visitors, though. We closed the zoo after this weekend. We're gonna keep the site at the Ramadi and open through the next weekend. We're working in a number of areas: Talbot Park, Suburban Park, Norview, Northside, North Chesapeake, Merrimack Landing, Pretty Lakeshore Drive, Ocean View, North and South Camellia, River Forest Shores, Huntersville, Easton, Glen Rock. We'll be working in those areas today, tomorrow, and on through the rest of the week. And again, our intentions are to get through all of this in about two weeks and then start going back again. Happy to answer any questions about all that.
So you think within two weeks you'll have all of it done? Is that what you're saying?
No, we'll be, have made a first pass through in two weeks. People are continuing to put stuff out. We're gonna have to go back at least one more time, in some cases, two more times. So that may take another month or so to, you know, to make that second pass. People are, you know, may not be able to cut up some stuff and get it out to the curb until one of the future weekends.
And I know you're working hard, but, you know, John, I see like in Lambert's Point here, Old Dominion, we said, what does initial collection start mean?
Well, it means we have to be, have had people in some part of that planning district. So some streets are done, not all. So, you know, depending on where you are in particular streets, again, some of them will be completely, will have been completely covered, some not.
But John, you've also made changes over the last forty-eight hours in terms of the way you're using your staff and your contractor.
Yeah, we have, you know, our city staff, we've been, again, diverting our stormwater streets folks entirely to the cleanup. They're working down the River Forest Shores area today. And we'll continue to use them and continue to work through the weekend. It was ten, twelve-hour days until we had a cleanup. And we've got more people in the contractor.
How does this compare with Isabel?
It seems like it's gonna be about a tenth of what Isabel had. And at Isabel, it took us till Christmas to get really through the first good pass of the city. It seems like we're gonna have a hundred thousand cubic yards, and I think we had about a billion with Isabel.
Okay. I think all of us are feeling certain, you know, questions about it.
Yeah, we do have a, we do have a helpline. There is information on the website. If people have a particular problem, they give us a call and we give them more specific information on when we're gonna be getting to their part of the city.
May I ask you one other question?
Yes, sir.
Overall, Gulf Street, I think that's where a lot of the, you know, debris is taken and the trees are riled up in the mounds.
Yes.
Does that most belong to the contractor or is it read to the public?
It belongs to the contractor because he is recycling it, though we're not, we're not being charged for the disposal of it. I'm not sure exactly what he'll do with his terms.
I drove through Park Place and it was a mess. It got pooped up here because it's kinda like a free ground. Can you have somebody go through there? But it was just, it was a hot mess. And that's what it was.
We'll shift some people.
Thank you.
This is where?
Park Place.
Okay. Thanks, John. I appreciate it. Council concerns. Council concerns. Ann?
I've been driving, Ann even left. I think I drove her to leave. Poor lady. She's, and I wanted to, she's done a great job. So I've been trying to make her agency evener.
Mr. Edding?
You know, one of the concerns has been plaguing some of the parents and residents around Campustella Elementary School. It's traffic that flows from Berkeley Avenue extended down to Inver River Road. And the police department has done a pretty good job, Public Works has done a pretty good job, but for some reason, we haven't been able to really control that traffic. And the principal, staff, and parents over at Campustella Elementary School are concerned that some of those children, you know, could get hurt. I think they have eight hundred students over there from that state, somewhere in that neighborhood. And I'm just, and this morning at our task force meeting, Assistant City Manager Hill was there, and he has a full report, and he really heard exactly how the residents felt and what they were concerned about. So hopefully, we can, you know, do something about it. One of the residents mentioned maybe a light there. I don't know how they would work, been trying to, you know, make that traffic move through. But, you know, we had that same problem at one time at Berkeley Avenue and Farquhar Street, and it took a young fellow getting killed, but then to put a light there. So let's hope that we can do something to take care of that before one of these, you know, students gets hurt over there. That's all I have.
Okay. I got a couple things. One on public hearing sections, which is modifying provisions concerning adult use of downtown. Right? Talking about not being able to, within a hundred feet of residents. That doesn't imply in any way that if they're not, they can stay up until two. Do you understand what I'm saying? We're not in the note. In other words, I know you put restrictions on people with adult use within certain hundred feet from residences.
Yes, sir.
But if that does not, what I'm saying, asking is that doesn't imply that if they're not within a hundred feet, they can stay up until two?
No, sir. You still have the ability to, the special exception process.
This is just further limiting. Okay. I didn't want to do anything by. Okay. Second thing is, you know, we've just gone through this hurricane, and I guess I've talked with the mayor about it. We've had the study for flooding study. Have we formally asked our congressional people that, you know, we're in trouble here, we need to step in? Where's our next step towards trying to get ahead of a disaster as far as flooding is concerned, rather than reacting like, I don't know, the dead downed wall instance? Well, have we maybe, where are we? Are we ready to call our delegation in and say, guys, you gotta go fight for some money? We gotta start fixing this? Or have we just gotten the study and we're just sitting?
You know, council, when we do have the study, we did set aside some funds in order for us to be, for lack of a better word, shovel-ready in terms of federal funds that have come available to us. But you are correct that the next step would be to up the ante and have this conversation with the delegation.
I think we need to do whatever, we need to get all of our federally elected officials that represent this area and let them have serious, we think, it says, get with the core or whoever. We work out a plan of where we're going, how we're getting there. We've got the studies. Maybe they can do, I would think they're under some obligation to go backwards here. Not only us, but the whole region. And so can we set in place a plan to?
Yes.
To get our name in front of them, or get the perfectly people in front of them? I just hate to be sitting here two years from now, whenever, still not, trying to be proactive. Okay. The last, the last is, and I know some of you got a call, the last item regarding collection of delinquent taxes. I just wanna be sure that every, have all the, has everybody been at the table on this thing? I guess I'm asking you. It represented me that the commissioner has not been involved at all.
She has been involved, but that she has an additional question. I don't know if the manager was going to propose that we delay this so that we could work through that or proceed tonight. Were you addressing this tonight?
My understanding right now is that the question relates to how it will be executed, how the process will actually work. But in terms of the drafting, my understanding is has been some level of discussion about tax delinquencies in general.
Well, okay, I mean, but is it your feeling, Mark, that as our attorney, we ought to raise the rest of the charge?
Maybe the vice mayor might be able to weigh in on whether delaying it would impact on the.
I'm talking two weeks. I'm trying next meeting, next week.
Yeah, it would, and I would yield and allow all of us, one of the staff people to speak to that.
I don't hear anybody saying that they ought to be delayed tonight. I mean, I'm prepared to vote on the document.
Let me just, let me just say this. All right. In the absence of this, what we're doing.
I don't think anybody's questioning if we need more tools to collect.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, what we're doing today in terms of leaning businesses' bank accounts, which could adversely affect their ability to make payroll, we shouldn't have to do that. Other municipalities don't have to do that. They have this ordinance. We drafted this ordinance off a neighboring municipality. We didn't change anything.
Which one?
It was Chesapeake or Portsmouth, one of the other.
Well, both of them use this, and we're just trying to get in step, in line, and using the same tools.
I'm not criticizing the fact that we want to be efficient.
This is not to hurt businesses. This is to help business and help our bottom line at the end of the day.
Well, my whole point, if all the players have been at the table together to work through this, then that's fine. They haven't.
We have had, we have had meetings with Mr. Pishko. We've had meetings with city staff, budget office, she was there. She was at the meeting. Her staff folk were at the meeting when we met with the budget office, down in the budget office. So we've had a number of discussions. It's something we've been talking about for a year and a half.
I would say this would be a pressing concern. And here again, I'm all about, it's like, what is the difference? If you don't get, if you have, right now, your garnishment bank account's there, correct?
Right.
If they don't pay.
But we shouldn't have to.
But then now they're saying you can't get a business license, right?
Excuse me?
Now, this ordinance says if you're not up to date, you cannot get a business.
What this does is forces the business to come in and, one, educate themselves on the process in terms of they have not been filling out the forms in terms of looking at what their personal property assessed at. Then at that point, they can question that with the commissioner, what have you. We have a job to collect based on what is assessed. If they find out that their assessment is erroneous, they can appeal that with her. If the assessment is correct, they come over to us, they pay it. If there's a hardship, we work out an agreement that carries them to June 1st. But we are not in the business of trying to put businesses out of business. We're in the business of trying to help business. But at the end of the day, we got taxes to collect, and we're collecting the money that is owed to the city. And we've had businesses to come in. We know that this is, this is working, but the way that we're having to do it now, to me, we shouldn't have to. Other municipalities don't do that. We shouldn't have to be, again, lean a bank account and adversely affect someone's payroll.
Our only reports tell us to lean a bank account.
That's not, we have to do what we have available to us. And this is, right now, we're manually doing this, and we shouldn't have to. But if we put this ordinance in place, then what happens just once they, if they hadn't paid, they gotta come to us, okay? We don't have to, like, looking through a needle to a haystack.
If they haven't paid, they just don't get a business license, right?
No, that's not, that's not the case.
It's part of.
No, that's not the case. If they come in and there's a hardship, they can't pay it all, we got to June 1st. We can work with them. But at this time, they get further behind, or, in many cases that we've seen thus far, is that in many cases, some of these businesses have been erroneous assessed, and we got situations now where we're waiting for these refunds to come before the council so we can refund that money at ten percent, minor.
We pay them?
Yes, we have to pay them ten percent interest on that money.
How to change?
Actually not, but that's a different conversation.
We pay ten percent because we charge ten percent if they're late.
No, 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 no. That's a state, that's a state, that's a state code.
They've already paid.
That's the state.
Give it back.
No.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get.
We don't charge them ten percent.
I wanna be efficient. I wanna do, I just.
We're not charging them ten percent.
I just presented that all the parties that are involved have not been a part of this negotiation. Everybody else.
We have been talking about this for the last year and a half.
Anthony, this minor saying, your belief was it's best not to wait the two weeks.
It's best not to wait the two weeks.
That's a business decision.
That's a business decision. It's $2.9 million business decision. This thing, these accounts.
We can have it in a week, 'cause we meet next month.
These, these accounts fall off every five years, okay? And so again, you have a window of opportunity to capture.
It's not your limitations of five years.
Yeah, this, this is machine and tool tax. Yes.
We've got some that have been hanging for five years.
Well, they fall off after that.
I know.
Right. This is, this, right, this has been, this has been a problem. And so we're trying to mitigate the problem, and we tried to, we're bringing this to the council.
Why haven't we attached their bank accounts like you just said we could do if it's still hanging out? If they've been out four and a half years?
Well, I can't speak to that. I hadn't been there four and a half years. I can only speak to what we're doing now.
So what I'm hearing is if you wouldn't be probably to wait one week and let the commissioner weigh in on it?
She, yes, well, she was concerned that that particular statute comes under her purview.
She doesn't collect taxes.
Anyway, she, you know, she says she couldn't be here tonight. She didn't wanna wait a week.
And I got that same call, that a week, you know, wouldn't be that detrimental to waiting to give her opportunity to weigh in on it.
She's not collecting taxes.
Anthony says it's.
Can we make that? Can the attorney tell us about that? Commissioner does not collect taxes.
No, but the commissioner's office does issue a license.
The commissioner is, does a couple of things, but that, there is a state statute that permits this specifically, that it allows a locality to pass an ordinance that prohibits the issuance of a business license or a business that has delinquent taxes. And the treasurer collects the majority of the taxes. There are some taxes, like people that are self-assessing, and the revenues come through the commissioner to the treasurer. And if there's delinquencies there, it's the treasurer's responsibility to collect those. But I don't know what the percentage is, but it's, the treasurer primarily is the collection agency. So the commissioner primarily assesses the treasurer just collects. And so that, given the statute that permits the ordinance, that the only, the most logical choice for determining whether there's a delinquency is with the collect, the collector, which is the treasurer, so that we don't have any doubts about the propriety of the ordinance, that it's fairly simple from our perspective, that it's a state statute that permits it.
Okay, but everybody else is comfortable. We, whatever number, month, five days.
I think waiting two weeks won't kill anybody.
We, we have been writing off millions of dollars each year.
That's not.
This is machine.
That's true.
It is, because we.
We've been attaching bank accounts all from the last five years.
Well, I can't speak to that. What I, what I, what I can speak to is why would you not prohibit us from doing our job?
I have no doubt that what you're trying to do is the right thing.
If there are, she does not collect machine and tools tax, two types. She does not collect that. She has nothing to do with that. You got a business license and which, which.
This is saying, if I'm not paying my machine and tool or personal property or real estate tax, then I can't go get a business license?
That's not, that's, that's, that's not what that's saying. We would, the, listen, what the ordinance read and what we are doing, we would not deny a business, a business license. What will happen is they will have to come in and set up some type of arrangement to make payments before June 1st so we can capture all of that revenue in the fiscal year.
I'm all for that. No, I'm not, I'm just trying to be sure that we don't jump to something that in a week or two, we can clarify that everybody fell behind and that we were all moving ahead.
And I think that's appropriate, because if it gives everybody an opportunity to see how this is gonna be implemented and how it's gonna be carried out, what is waiting two weeks so that everybody understands?
Who is everybody?
Council, business members, people who are gonna be affected by it, and give the commissioner an opportunity to weigh in.
Well, we've had these conversations. She's been at the table.
See, that, I'm not, I'm not.
That is not the impression that I got when I spoke to him.
I got the exact opposite. And I'm not saying who did what. I'm just trying to figure out how we could behave negatively affecting if we could get everybody pulling, if we are all on the same team, to get everybody pulling the same way. I know one thing, as a business owner, I would be more worried about you attaching my account than I would about you not giving me a business license.
Excuse me?
I'll tell you that.
Okay, so, but I'm telling you, that's what's happening. We, we, this has been pushed off for the manager, us, that it be pushed off, and that's being pushed off again.
This is the first I've heard of.
This is the first I've heard.
This is the first I've heard.
This is not the first time we've brought this to the council's attention.
The first at my sixty-three-year-old brain dimension. I mean, I know we've talked about collection inefficiencies and writing off, I know we've worked all of the proof and everything. I'm not saying, I'm just hoping to remember this specific issue, and I'm not saying we didn't do it. I might.
I'd rather vote, you can vote it down. We'll continue to do what we're doing.
But I don't wanna vote it down. Why you gonna vote it down? It seems to me you're being hard-headed if waiting.
No, I'm not being, I'm not being hard-headed. I'm not being, I'm not being hard-headed.
Well, you gonna vote it down and put the whole thing out?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying you can vote it up or you can vote it down. But what I'm saying is, I don't think it should be taken off the table. Again, what we're doing now is to the detriment of a business, more so than this ordinance. This ordinance will only help businesses, okay? What we're doing now, okay, manually in the absence of this ordinance.
I agree.
Okay? What we're doing is coming to the city council and asking.
I'm not arguing that point at all.
Okay.
I'm just thinking that we ought to have some kind of harmony downstairs.
I'm sorry.
Every time you're involved intimately in revenue for the city, I'm not defending or whatever. All I'm saying is, if it's so critical at four and a half years, four years, nine months and two weeks, it should've come way before that.
You got to know what you're saying.
All right. You're telling me we're gonna lose $10 million because we don't do it today, then that's another question.
Well, the last two years, we've lost half a million dollars.
Well, then why didn't we do it two years ago?
We've been trying for the last two years to get this ordinance passed.
We've been trying, how?
We worked with the city attorney.
Come on, you don't want to do it, okay? You want to continue it or not?
I would think we ought to give it at least a week.
We're not, we don't, we're not here next week.
Well, we're there, and we're meeting, we have official.
The manager just says we don't vote, I mean, the clerk says we're not here next week. What do you want to do? I mean, let's not, enough of this.
I'd like to continue. We don't normally vote, but if the council wanted to vote, it's retreat. It is an option that you have. We've not done it, I remember in the past, but it is a meeting.
Well, two weeks.
Yeah, I don't think two weeks will kill anybody.
Yeah, it's not your business. It's easy for you to say.
Well, I think if business owners are aware of what we're doing and they understand the process, then they will appreciate us waiting two weeks.
There really does appear, however, and I don't mean to interject, I say most of everybody wants to wait a couple of weeks, but there really does appear, at least if Anthony has the treasurer's hat on, there does appear to be a significant issue of waiting.
Yeah.
What?
There seems to be a significant issue involved if we do wait. And that's, perhaps if you could.
There's, there's letters to get out, there's the education of giving stuff to the businesses. It's, yeah, and we do that. Our office does that, okay? And so.
I'm prepared to vote tonight, you know, and I'm prepared to vote for it. Only question I have here is to make sure that we have enough votes.
I don't think anybody wants to vote against it. I don't think anybody wants to vote against it.
Nobody wants to vote it down.
I hear you.
I just wanna wait and get everybody in the room.
So what will happen in the two weeks in the interim is really the question. I mean, so I think that if that be the case, Paul, if I could, I'm giving one, I think the real question is, is if we do wait two weeks, then what is the expectation that's gonna occur in two weeks? Are we gonna get a memo from the office and there'll be a change in this ordinance? What's the expect, I think that's really what, as a governing body, what we need to examine is, is what is going to occur in two weeks? We need, there needs to be a plan.
Yeah. And as I understand, I mean.
And I don't know what it is.
And the manager, you know, that the commissioner has relayed to you that she doesn't have a problem with the ordinance. It's how it's gonna be executed. I mean, isn't, couldn't that be the subject of the discussion later after we pass the ordinance?
Well, the two issues that she relayed to me was the coordination on the front end and then how it would be executed on the, on the back end.
It's not gonna be executed tomorrow. There's logistical work that has to be done, you know, to prepare for it. So passing the ordinance today just gives us the ability to be able to start to getting our ducks in the room and dealing with these businesses and not having to do what we're doing and having a time where it triggers.
How long is it gonna take to do your, get the letters?
So if we issued the ordinance today, would garnishments immediately stop? Is that what you're saying?
If we issued.
If we, if we wrote it off the ordinance today, would garnishments immediately stop?
No, why would garnishment immediately stop?
Wait, garnishing the people's bank accounts, would that immediately stop?
No, it will not. We got people that their case is pending, their, their, their ongoing cases now, okay? But we got a June, our fiscal year, in terms of looking at our fiscal year, when did the fiscal year run down? And looking at the revenue we have to capture. You know, the city administration gives us mandates that we have to meet, okay? And we broke that down for the administration in terms of the area of deficiencies as relates to this revenue. And like I said, that particular area right now is about $2.9 million, okay? And every, was it March 5th? First, March 1st?
Business license.
All right, that's one issue. But this tangible property could be, that could, that could go back. That could be money that they owe us three years ago, four years ago. And when, and if it's four years ago, that means March 1st would be five years, and that falls off the book.
Right, but if they don't have to come back for their license till March 1st, really, you got their hammer on, except for what you got right now, until then, right?
No, no, we, we, we do have a hammer. We got folk that are willing to come in now, okay? And try to work, understand what.
They can't do that, they can't come in.
We, we're doing it manually though. We, we're doing that manually. We got one person that's going through all of these accounts, okay? We've having, we're having to have the city attorney work with us on a few in terms of the complexity of some of these cases.
Software system or something?
No, we don't have a so, what I'm saying to you.
How are you going to do it after?
When it, with, after the ordinance? What happens then, they have to come to us. We, we don't lose anybody. Nobody slips through the cracks. Because.
Okay, we're, we're way beyond.
Yeah, they have to come to us then because they could not get their business license if they had, they had the legal and taxes. The ordinance is not going to change. We're not going to, I, I, when I spoke to Bernard, we looked at what our neighboring cities were doing. We didn't craft an ordinance that fits the city of Norfolk. We crafted an ordinance that was consistent with what everybody else was doing. So the ordinance is not going to change. So to me, what is the conversation going to be about, you know, 13 days from now?
I just, the only conversation I have is players not communicating for some reason, at least that's represented to me. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not assing judgment or who said what or who should have been. Critical, I'm not going to vote it down because of money. I would prefer to see it wait two weeks to let, whatever chance to get any input if we can make it better or maybe not change it at all. Maybe it's, I don't know which, which is the whole thing. Obviously, downstairs doesn't play well together at all.
Okay.
This is not about personality. This is about revenue.
All right, Anthony, do you have anything to add? Any other, I mean, council?
What is your recommendation?
Well, we put it in front of council, it's what you desire to do right now.
But your recommendation? Is that we're asking the ordinance, he doesn't. No, I mean.
We're part of the ordinance.
I wouldn't get into those.
Mark for that.
We're already too deep in. The rest of us.
Anthony, you're prepared to vote. All right, so we got three just prepared to vote. We got three that Tom will give you. I'll prepare to vote.
Okay, you need five. All right, who else? Do you have anything else, any other council concerns?
Oh, I, I, that wasn't even my council concern, that was ours. More pleasantries. Okay, trucks on Princess Anne right there, across from the McDonald's and One Stop App brought that up before, they still park in Eighteen Willows on the Feta Lane by Park Terrace. Spoke with the management, they would like some assistance and help with that. I think we talked about putting a note, park trucks there. I continue to see kids in the intersections throughout the city, like I said, on the Hardee's, on twenty, that's Twenty-first Street, Valentine, Virginia Beach Boulevard. Where I saw them the other day. Well, they're, they continue to steal out there in the mediums and they dodge into traffic. I just, if they, again, I reiterate that if they're playing for our parks and rec teams, then I think that we should have a conversation with the coaches about having these young men out there. They didn't sign up to go out there and solicit money, they signed up to play football and to become young men. And I don't think that that's teaching these young, these young men the right of values and doing so. Switching over to one of Mr. Riddick's area, Bell Diamond, I talked to Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Riddick, she said that the Bell Diamond, when they pick up the, they, they were supposed to put the trash signs up, the no parking from this time to that time, and they haven't did that. So when they, I guess the street sweeper comes out there, all the cars are there, they're, they're not getting the, the curves swept. Another issue on, we, we addressed this before, the auto mechanic service facility on Wilson Road and Berkeley Avenue, right on that corner there. They cleaned it up one time and now it's right back, it's even worse than it was before. They need to know that we're serious. I mean, like I said, there's investment being made on Wilson Road and.
It used to be Wall's Transmission, I think if you go all the way back to 1992 because that ordinance was passed in 92. And I don't really believe that they're doing what they're supposed to do as far as the ordinance is concerned. And so we probably need to go in and, you know, get everyone better.
Yeah, well, his dad, their dad would be upset with us. He, he turned over.
Yeah, they're not doing what they should.
We, we, we continue to need a police presence. And, and one of the things I talked about, just more so than a presence, what their strategic plan is as it relates to policing Merrimack Market, well, I won't even say Merrimack, in and around the store and the One Stop. Just continue to see the illicit activity of drug distribution out there. So I would hope that, I want to, you know, I want to begin to see a plan, you know, some outcomes, not just, you know, putting a Band-Aid on it, appeasing this body by saying, look, we're out there. I mean, you're really, really cracking down on it. One of the things that I do see, we, we do a good job as a city in terms of designing and building our parks and our open space and the equipment, but we don't do a good job of maintaining these facilities. I was out at Shoe Park and, you know, for example, you got the, the picnic shelters where you have people to come out there and they have birthday parties or what have you. But then the tape and stuff is up there and it begins to become an eyesore. I think that one of the things that we should do is inventory at the end of the year at some point, someone should be going around and looking at our, our, our public art to see if it needs cleaning or if it's been damaged, you know, our benches or, you know, amenities, the lampposts and things like that in our parks because, you know, sometimes we wait to, or playground equipment, we wait to get to a point of no return. And I think that it's, it's, it's easier to maintain it if we're out there servicing it on an ongoing basis. And then lastly, we talked about this somewhat in our committee meeting, but from an economic development standpoint, you know, water side, you know, we, it was, it's, we got to move forward, you know? Downtown, like I said, I mean, when I look at the number unit, I mean, people should be, should want to live in our downtown. And, and you gauge from a real estate standpoint in terms of vibrancy and vacancies. And so we got to ask ourselves, are we providing, are we still providing, are we moving the needle in terms of providing the quality of life amenities that people are looking for? We're in competition, make no mistakes about it. Hampton is, is, they've done a tremendous job over there in their little towns. Virginia Beach is continuing to, to expand their towns. Chesapeake, whether it be out of Chesapeake Mall, Rain Brae area. So we, we, we got to, we got, we, we, we can't rely on what we did yesterday. We got to continue to push the envelope. And we've done some, some great things. We got Buffalo Wild Wings coming, but we, we got to do all of that, and so.
Angela?
Just a couple of things. Legion Road. Can we get Legion Road assessed for traffic, for speed on? There's a lot of traffic that comes through there, cutting, cutting through, because we get, just, I don't know that. And I had a call about the lights over Grand Park Basketball Court. And last thing, it's going to be something redundant, but if I was married, I don't know, or that's crazy, I got a couple of calls going, that's crazy, the norm has to the track.
We're, we're working on that. Mike Spencer gave me a call. We're working on that. He's working with city administration. So hopefully this spring we'll have a schedule that would allow citizens to go in, of course, for a couple of hours a evening and be able to walk, not bicycles, not track shoes, dress shoes, but, you know, so we're working on that.
That's it? The head of the board over at the Chrysler would like to invite the city council to have a discussion about, you know, their capital improvement campaign. And, you know, it's, the head of the Chrysler Museum Board right now is making rock. And they've been engaged for some time now in a pretty successful campaign to raise some money. So they're also building this new glass studio over there. And, you know, he wanted to know how he got on the calendar to come over here and just update the council on what they're doing. And I suggested maybe the council would go to the museum on one of these Tuesdays where we don't have a, you know, I mean, one of those softerst agenda days that.
Not before the botanical garden.
We can go, we can go on the same day.
Seriously?
We can go to the zoo, we can go to botanical gardens and we can go to the museum on the same. But I mean, if everybody would agree just to keep us a few minutes, we don't have to do the zoo, but we can go to botanical gardens and go to the, and then go to the Chrysler, you know? We try to schedule something like that. And the, I mean, and also, I mean, I think they're pretty close to, I don't know where they are in doing that glass facility.
I went to the opening, I mean, to the presentation, and it's, it's pretty close.
So.
And it's going to be a fabulous, so.
Yeah, something. So if you could just pick a date that we can, you know, take a couple hours to do that, maybe run out to botanical gardens and, and then go to the Chrysler. Okay?
Marcus, if this is, if this is an overview, overview of the retreat, one thing I'd like for us to have a hard discussion on, well, not as a hard discussion, I would like to take some time to find out how much it would cost us for raises for our employees and retirees. We tend to do everything else and if there's anything else left, we'll give retirees or, you know, or employees a raise. But I would like to see at, at the onset of developing the budget that we can talk about as a retreat, giving our retirees and employees a reasonable increase. And I know it would cost us because it stays in them. I'm talking about a bonus. I'm talking about something that they can look forward to. I think this next budget cycle will be five years. And so I would like to have some idea of what it would cost us. And I'm just throwing this out as amount, maybe like 4% for employees and 2% for retirees in terms of, you know, permanent raises, to give an idea of what that would cost. And also how much it would cost us if we opened our recreation centers, pools and, and libraries that they would be able to close. We have a discussion on that. One of Fox's neighbors asked me to mention what we know, say, again.
He can give you, he can tell you for each percentage for what it costs.
Right, yeah.
So it doesn't have to be 4%. He can tell you what, each percentage for that. That's, and Paul brought up a good point. The manager has handed out, handed out a draft agenda. Has anybody seen anything on here they want to?
I tell you what.
We could do that early, you know, whereas you do the state of the economy and then the year end.
Sure.
You could just fit that in there. How about that, in that first discussion?
But it's a vibrant dynamic city. I think that'll put me to sleep. It comes right after lunch. Red light dynamic city.
Red light cameras.
I think I've been set up.
Yeah, you've been.
I have been set up, but I understand there's been a discussion that I missed, I was actually outside eating, about, I, I also would like to take a moment.
Oh, Barkley.
No, it wasn't Barkley, I started with this. I came in and said that. I, I did not, I just said something to him and he said, you bring it up.
All right, thanks for that. Okay, does anybody see anything on the agenda? No, I'm not, no, I'm not. We've, we had, we've had that discussion and if you vote against it, make the motion.
You have a new deal.
Okay, if you have any additions or anything else you want to bring, you want to get on the council retreat, now is the time or the next couple of days, so.
Will the, can I just add, this parking, will that, what, how broad will that topic be?
Extremely. It's going to talk about just the parking system in general. A conversation that we could have had months ago or years ago, as well as the impact of light rail and how that may be an impact on the parking system.
Will it include the parking?
Go ahead, go ahead, wait a minute, Terry, go ahead. This could include everything.
Will it include permitting in neighborhoods?
Initially, that was not a part of the discussion, that's something you'd like for us to discuss.
Well, no, this has been an issue that we've been working on in Stanley for several years. I know you're coming to Larchmont, but I know that's an issue with, again, task force. I'm just curious, I mean, Barkley, what do you think about that?
We certainly don't, I don't know why it would be part of it.
And I'd like to relook, you know, the metered parking downtown, which I guess you're going to talk about.
The, the initial vote was really on the fund, parking fund, but this is an issue that's, we can include that, we will include it.
Okay, we took a whole hour to get through all of this.
That's why I tried.
Which is why the manager didn't want to do council interest. So I guess we'll start with the Dollar Tree deals and the G D corrections.
This is for our members of council. Dollar Tree deals is an item that is going to be coming to council on the 27th. So consistent with your request, whenever we have a negative recommendation from the planning commission, we try to give you a little bit of background on the item. This is a request to approve a special exception for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premise consumption, Dollar Tree deals on East Virginia Beach Boulevard. Site, the location is within the Janoff Shopping Center. Its current zoning is C3, which does require this special exception. What they're proposing to do is not change the hours that they're currently operating. It would be 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and then 8:00 until 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. The administration were recommending approval because it does, does meet all of the zoning ordinance requirements and it is consistent with approved plans and given the limited hours of operation, we didn't see this as a major issue. Planning commission split straight down the middle office on a two-two vote. And by the rules of procedure of the planning commission, that means it comes to you as a recommendation of denial. The two people who supported the request voted for it because of the same reasons that the administration's recommending approval. It is consistent with the ordinance and with all plans and does have limited hours. The people who voted opposed to it, voted in opposition, expressed concern that this may be a precursor to Dollar Tree seeking to do off-premise sales at additional establishments.
Frank, have they done this in other cities?
Yes, Chesapeake and Virginia Beach, Dollar Tree deals does have the capacity to sell for off-premise consumption. The representatives of Dollar Tree who were present assured the planning commission it's not their intention to, to look at extending the sale into all of the Dollar Trees. it's not their intention to, to look at extending the sale into all of the Dollar Trees.
Why is this one so special? Just, why is this one selected?
Dollar Tree deals is a different marketing concept than a typical Dollar Tree. And so that's what they're trying to do, is that the Dollar Tree deals, they are looking to do this kind of an approach, where it's not that everything's a dollar in a Dollar Tree deals, it's, there are discounts.
That's, that's on our.
It'll be on your formal agenda on the twenty-seventh. You have asked, whenever there's a negative recommendation, we provide that information, the information to you, give you that background information before you're asked to vote on it. So we wanted to give you that heads up before what's coming on the twenty-seventh. The administration's recommendation was approval because it is consistent with all ordinances, very limited hours of operation, and it's also consistent with all approved And the second presentation I have for you is a presentation that Mr. Smigal had asked that we do, providing you with some information regarding the policy document that was crafted by the city attorney's office working with the planning department a couple of years ago on how we would deal in Beach and Dune encroachments. We never brought this actual policy before you, and I believe we're going to be bringing this for you also on the twenty-seventh as a resolution so you could figure out what this is. To give you a little background on this particular issue, as far back as two thousand and three, staff was identifying a large number of unpermitted encroachments. This is a structure on city right-of-way or city property, and we had a whole, just a huge number of them along Chesapeake Bay. Two thousand and five, city council said, no more, we don't want to do any of these. We began getting complaints about the existing encroachments. So in two thousand and six, city councils had developed some guidelines for this. Two thousand and eight, we did a comprehensive assessment and created a committee with representatives from a number of civic leagues in the area. And then in two thousand and nine, we had the Veterans Day nor Easter, and we began to see the impact of all of these encroachments on our dune system, where many of them were demolished and created real public safety issues. The membership of the committee that began working on this issue consisted of representatives of every civic league in the area, homeowners associations from groups like East Beach and Bay Breeze Point. We also had representatives of the environmental commission and the wetlands board. So it was a huge effort bringing together a diverse group of people to try to look at making recommendations. And what they were charged with doing was conducting this comprehensive assessment and doing some analysis of Beach and Dune structures and developing guidelines that the city would use to meet community goals based on best practices. And they also wanted to develop a process for reviewing and approval of structures. And when the committee came in, they indicated that they wanted to have two categories, things that would be generally approved or things that would be generally discouraged. And so to give you some examples of how this would work, here you've got a dune walkway that was lowered in order to try to comply, but it still blocks a view. And so the idea is that that begins to be a problem because you want people to be able to see the views of the bayfront and the beach as they are looking at the dune. And the idea of the best process with the new guidelines, you wouldn't have the handrails. You would actually have this, this structure lower, the dune crossover structure low enough where you would not have to have the handrails under the building code, and it wouldn't create that visual obstacle that this one does create. So this was, is just an example of how these best practices and the design criteria would use. And so what that tells you is if we had applied that standard that was suggested by the committee or is, and is suggested in the guidelines, you'd still have the handrails going up to the platform for the dune crossover, but then you would lose it once you got to the dune, the cap, the top of the dunes themselves, and it maintains that view. So the idea was that this would, would enhance the visual impact of these crossovers along the dune.
Why is it because the dune is level that you don't have to have?
Yes, sir. This is, this is at a low enough point where you don't, under the building code, you don't need the rails. Whereas if it is up higher, which this one is, you need the rails because of a building code. The issue was lower it as much as possible.
So it's near the dune?
It is closer to the dune, yes.
Because other than that, you would have to follow it.
Correct. It's a building code, becomes a building code issue the higher you get it. The idea was keep it low.
And lowering it doesn't destroy the dune.
Lowering it does not hurt the dune. Because you're not really on the dune, you were just.
If you got a person in a wheelchair then what?
If you got a person in a wheelchair, they're not going to be able to get across here either.
Right, because they got the steps.
Because you got steps. If you've got a person in a wheelchair, they're going to have to go to one of the, the breaks in the dune line in order to be able to get through here because either approach, they're not going to be able to get up the steps.
That's true.
The way that the program works and the policy that has been recommended is that it requires city council approval before anything is built on the dunes. And these requests are considered just like a normal encroachment. They are coordinated by the public works department with other city departments, including the planning, to ensure that they are not creating any issues or problems. And one of the other things that we did was establish these kind of design criteria. And what we said is if you are meeting all of the criteria that are laid out in the policy document with regard to the design, so that it is a narrower crosswalk, it doesn't have the broad platforms that some people have wanted to do, it doesn't have to go through the design review committee. By ordinance, any encroachment requires going through design review, but we said if you meet all of these policy guidelines that are laid out in the document, we can bypass design review and get it straight to council. So that's the incentive we've given to people to try to follow all of these guidelines. The other issues we've said is, is we are ensuring that we have building permits for these structures because they do meet building code requirements or building codes, and we will not grant a building permit, my office will not issue a building permit until after city council has granted the encroachment. We do not charge for these encroachments, which is different from the way we deal with most other encroachments.
I ask you a question.
Yes.
You did a modular.
Uh huh.
And you built it before you actually, so you didn't, you didn't infringe upon the deal, you brought it in, and it was already built, and it was over.
You're still going to need the encroachment because that's, they're using city property. And that's, that's where we got them. Even on the modular, we still got them because, because by ordinance, by state law, like, people can't use city property without your approval. What we have said, and this is a whole list of things that are generally okay. And so what you see are things like the walkways that you were seeing the dune crossover, the steps leading up to them, this, this whole array of things that are generally okay. Generally discouraged, these are not prohibited, they are discouraged. People would have a right to ask for them, but as administration, we would be recommending against these things. And the issue is, again, trying to maintain that view of the waterfront. But you do have a list of things that are discouraged. And so under the new process, what staff does, and this is the process we've been doing for about, and I'll look totally about the past year, year and a half.
Yes, sir.
What we've been doing is we evaluate the request when it comes in. What we are looking at is the need for this crossover relative to other crossovers in the area. Is it going to create instructions of feuds? What kind of safety issues do we anticipate from this? Because we do have an obligation for public safety through these crossovers and to making sure that we are providing access. And if we can draw the idea that all of these criteria are met, then we would be recommending, we would be determining that it is necessary and we would be recommending approval. And so what will be coming to you in two weeks is the resolution that Mr. Pishko has drafted to formally adopt this policy. It is the approach that we have been using, it's previously indicated for about the past eighteen months.
I do think, Frank, that we decided that John Mayer or somebody that we got to go ahead and prove yesterday night because he's been languishing.
Mr. Mayer's application would be consistent with this. The issue we ran into was that there were some people who were on the original committee who did not, were saying it was inconsistent with their recommendations, and they're correct because what they had recommended originally is that we just prohibited something that we, after talking to Mr. Pishko in the city attorney's office, we said we will recommend against them if they're inconsistent with the guidelines, but we won't prohibit. We would allow council to have that final say so.
Okay.
You ready for the?
If, how long is this going to take, Frank? Because I don't want to shorten. How long?
Well.
Somebody say forever.
I will tell you.
It's a section.
Broke it into two sections because when we brought in the first one, Marcus and Ann were saying, we're never going to get through three hundred slides, council won't sit through it. So we just severely edited down and we broke it into two sections. What we want to be able to do.
I want to, I want to, I want to save a couple of times to make sure we pass this appointments, ordinance, the license, or I couldn't be here. I'm glad to do that.
If you'd like to do that, we can do that.
Okay. Okay. You should only take a minute. I think we've agreed on most of this stuff, you know, so, you know.
Okay. Well, I will move back.
Let's go into closed session, and we're only going to be a few minutes.
Well, he's leaving or what, everybody's leaving. Can somebody tell me about this, this ordinance or?